Alderman Shawkey.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Caddella.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
He's here, but he ain't here yet.
I believe we have a quorum present. I will make a motion to approve the -- actually, before I do that, there is one change that I did find needs to be made to the meeting minutes from April 22nd, was that? Was that the Saturday meeting?
No.
No, never mind. I won't make that change then. Motion to approve minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. All right. The first item this evening is a report and recommendation on reduction of letter of credit for Georgetown townhomes. John Forrest, we had a discussion about this at the last committee meeting. You were gonna do a little bit of research and get back to us. It was a good memo, but if you wouldn't mind recapping for us all?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I will. Staff did a little more research on the Georgetown townhomes. There were some questions that came up during our initial discussion about reducing the letter of credit. One of the questions was brought up was whether or not the developer was responsible for installing decorative street lighting. The city engineer and I both looked at the various plans for the subdivision. There was no reference to any ornamental street lighting or, in fact, any street lighting at all that was to be installed with the subdivision. And the other question that came up was the status of the last building. The developer had been issued a permit for that building. They put in the foundation, the underground plumbing. The gas services have been run to the main bank where the meters are going to be. Floor slabs were poured, and then construction stopped because of the condition of the economy. They have several units over there still for sale. They're not sure when they're going to finish the last building, but they did start on that with a permit. We are holding the cash bond for several of those buildings. So in addition to the letter of credit that we're holding, we have about $80,000 of a cash bond tied to the permits that we're holding.
Mr. Forrest, it's your professional opinion that the condition of that site of the last building is acceptable and safe considering it's a construction project in the works that's been indefinitely put on hold?
I think what they need to go back -- they did do some rough grading in there. You know, I played phone tag with them this week, but I think they need to go in there and reinstall some of those sections of fencing and re-secure the site. Other than that, it's -- there's really not much else they can do at this point in time.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
John, I have one question for you. Since the permit's going to expire, I believe our permit goes for a year.
Correct.
To build.
Correct.
Now, that been vacant for a year, does he have to recome back and get new permits?
Yes, he will. In fact, that permit is already expired.
And now, does that mean if he decides to change the format of that building at all, does he go all the way back to planning and zoning? Or we allow him to make any changes on that building if he decides to?
Well, since the foundations are already in, which include the foundations for the party walls, I'd be hard-pressed to see how he could actually change.
Well, anyway, 'cause you ain't got the foundation to redesign.
Right. No, I mean, I can't see what purpose he would have to make any changes to the plans. I mean, it's the whole subdivision, the buildings are consistent with the approved design. They did finish the end building, which has all the units still available, and then this would be the next -- this is the next building in. So I can't see them making any changes on it, but...
Alderman Coles?
Maybe the reason why he can't sell them empty townhouses right next to that building is because that building isn't finished. And maybe if he finished the building, he might be able to sell the other ones. You know, you can't leave an open building like that stand because you're gonna have water come in there, you're gonna -- water's gonna set in there and everything else. That'll hurt the foundation. I might -- I would suggest that we could give him some of his money back, but not -- how much would it cost to finish that thing? Do you have any kind of idea?
To finish the entire building or to...
Yeah, the entire building, yeah.
I'd be just making a guesstimate at this point, but I'm sure it'd be several hundred thousand dollars.
Seven, three hundred thousand dollars at least?
Oh, easily. Sure.
Yeah, so...
You know, again, what they're coming in for is a request for the reduction of the letter of credit. The letter of credit is tied to the installation and approval of the public improvements. Your sewer, your water, your storm sewers, the reservoir. We are holding that separate $80,000 bond that's tied into the actual building permits.
Well, my opinion that he should at least finish the building. We could give him some, but I don't think we should give him all of it.
Before I call on Alderman Police, Mr. Forrest, there's a member of the audience behind you raising his hand. Does he part of this project? Can he shed some light on any of the questions asked here?
Sure.
Hi. Drew Danielz. Oh, I'm sorry.
Please come to the mic.
My name's Drew Danielz. I'm with Sexton Development. I'm the Director of Development for Sexton. And as all of you know, this project started in October of 2004. Pretty much the prime time is when -- that was when the market was flying, everything was going great. We started selling units pretty quickly, and then everything took a 180 real quick. To say the least, we went a full, almost 18 months without selling a unit. That did a lot of bad things for us, for the bank. Sexton's been around for 77 years. We've never defaulted in anything our entire life. And we are dangerously close to defaulting on this loan because of how long it has taken to sell units. Back in November, we made a strategic decision to cut prices a full 35% from what we were originally doing. We ended up selling 12 units. We've got five that are under construction right now. We are getting through the process. Every single month is an absolute struggle with the bank. With that, the letter of credit was secured in order to do the site improvements. And we have done all those site improvements except for that building. Trust me, we have gone over internally a dozen times and have spoken to the bank about completing the shell for that building, and they will not fund to do that. I agree, it's an eyesore, and I think it would help sell the units, but they will not release any more funds. They won't even release funds until we have a unit completely under contract with a certain amount of down payment towards the construction. So they are not being very cooperative, the bank. I have to admit that. They are being cooperative to the point where if they wanted to, they could've called this loan a long time ago. But they know that we have never defaulted on anything before, and we don't plan on doing it now. This reduction would vary, would help us a lot with the bank. I know that for a fact. And, you know, I know that John has seen a lot of what's going on out there over the last few years. We've been put into a situation where the bank is very hesitant to fund draws for our contractors, which has slowed down the project as well. And I know for a fact that this reduction will really help this project move along even faster. That's our goal. We've sold 12 units in the last six months, and that's pretty remarkable if you look at the situation out there right now. And I'm talking about all over the place. According to our bank, we've sold more units than almost any one of their other developers out there in the last six months. So I really think we're on the right track, but -- and I do promise you that we're gonna get this project done, but we do need your help, and that's why we're asking for the reduction in credit. We have 12 remaining of the 45. So the game plan would be -- game plan is that we would like to get the bank out of the deal first, and then with the remaining money that's left over, we'll put into that final building. So that will require a few more units to be sold. We won't need the last five, because that's obviously five units per building, but when we get to about nine or 10, we can shell out the rest of that building. So then it will look like the rest of them. And then we'll build each unit out individually as we get a contract. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you for presenting that information. Alderman Police, and then...
Basically, I was by there today, John. You were talking about the fence on one side's kinda leaning over, and I looked inside and I see there's pipes coming out of the ground. Is there something underneath that floor or just is it gravel where there's just water sitting or whatnot?
No, the concrete slabs have been poured.
Right, I saw the slabs. So they're tight, there's nothing, just, you know, like a mosquito infestation or anything going on?
Alderman Roy Wesley?
John, this 654,000, right? Am I reading this right that they're asking for?
The original letter of credit was 654,436.
Right.
Again, per the memo from Dave Graff, there -- or he's recommending that it be reduced to 69,789.
Okay. Could someone sit here and tell me that if we give him this reduction of letter of credit, that we don't run into the same place as we do at One Wooddale Place?
You're talking about the project that went into bankruptcy and receivership?
It's not -- we give this letter of credit, they release the bank. So nothing bad about your company or anything, but all of a sudden, goodbye.
Well...
I know it's a new situation. Huh?
Right. I don't have a crystal ball. That's kind of two separate issues, really. One, Wooddale Place was not required to post any sort of a letter of credit. The only thing they posted were the cash bonds with the permits. You know, they didn't really do any public improvements over there and no stormwater sewers or water. They did change some water services for the fire suppression system, but they paid for those. Those were all installed.
But you see my concern on this. I'm just saying that we give this letter of credit, they release the bank, it's gone, and hopefully this company stays around, but you never know.
Certainly. I mean, this board can make the decision to keep as much money as they want to or refund as much as they want to. Again, the only thing that I want to point out is that the letter of credit was specifically for the installation of the public utilities and the stormwater system.
I guess he wanted to address that, or I guess that's something the chairman...
The developer wanted to address that, but I think, Mr. Forrest, I mean, you're welcome to come back up and readdress that, but I think, Mr. Forrest, to me, made it clear that we're talking about two different things and...
I understand, yeah, and we are. I was just recommending that.
Yeah.
You might want to sit there.
You're welcome to stay here until we're done.
Worst-case scenario with the remaining amount of money that would be left over, if we did disappear, that foundation could be removed for that amount of money and sod it over. So I mean, that would be the absolute worst-case scenario, but you need to also understand the profit is always in the last few units. So there is nothing that would stop me from getting this project finished. But for that amount of money that's remaining on the bond, you could even take out that foundation, fill it in with sod, and be good to go.
Yeah.
So that's my recommendation.
Thank you.
Alderman Shawkey?
So we're talking about 85,000 in addition to keeping the 69,789 and 62 cents.
That is correct, yes. The 85,000 is a separate cash bond that the city is holding that is connected to the building permits.
Why -- can I ask why it's $789.62? How do you -- who comes up with the figure? Is it a certain percent of the original or...
Well, yes, if you read Dave Graff's memo, he -- Dave reviewed the as-built plans for the public improvements and the stormwater system that were prepared by the developer's civil engineer. They have to prepare an as-built survey showing all the elevations, showing the capacities of all the stormwater, and then our city engineer reviews those as-built drawings, compares them to what the approved, proposed plans were. And if the two coincide and match up, then the city engineer could make a recommendation to reduce the letter of credit.
So he knows it's gonna be down to this extra 67 or 62 cents, huh? I was just curious about that. Thank you.
Alderman Coles?
Well, if you keep this 85,000 and 69,000, it would come to $154,000. I would say that'd be okay, as far as I'm concerned.
Alderman Police?
John, regarding the 85,000, being that the other buildings are done, the 85,000, the bond, nothing gets returned until all the buildings are complete, right? If I'm under -- I want to make sure I understand this right.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna have some of the buildings finished. Does he get a percentage of that back or nothing back?
This 85,000 is covering the permits for several of the buildings. They posted one cash bond to cover several of the permits. And, yeah, we can hold that till they're finished with everything.
Till all the buildings are done, right? Okay.
Okay. If no further discussion, I will make a motion to concur with staff to reduce this letter of credit from 654,436.42 to the very specific number of 69,789.62. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One opposition. Motion carries. Next item is a report and recommendation on the possible allowance of additional lot coverage with the use of permeable materials. Is this going to be Mr. Forrest, or is this gonna be Mr. John Philander taking this?
We're going to tag team.
Excellent. Laura's yours, gentlemen.
Thank you. As many of you are aware, the Community Development Department regularly receives applications for permits from residents who, for whatever reason, their properties are already or exceed the maximum allowable lot coverage. As I said in the memo, there's a variety of reasons that that might occur. In older homes, it could be improvements that have happened over the years, patios, sheds, things that have been built, some with permits, some without permits. With the newer homes that we've seen in town for the last 15 years or so, the developers are paying or were paying so much for the property that they're kind of maxing out their lot coverage with the new house just out of the box. The house, the driveway, the sidewalks, that somebody, when they buy the new house, they're at their maximum lot coverage. So we frequently get requests for people coming in. They want to add a patio, they want to put a shed up. We have to turn them down because they're at their maximum lot coverage. We can't allow any extra. Several years ago, staff, actually in October of 2001, staff made a presentation to the City Council to consider allowing permeable paver bricks as an acceptable alternative to sort of correct some of these situations and allow residents to put in a patio or maybe a small shed, maybe a parking space for their boat, something like that. At that time, there was a lot of discussion back and forth, and Council decided at that point that any sort of lot coverage that was put in, whether it was permeable or impermeable, was all considered lot coverage, and we were gonna stay at the 35% maximum allowable coverage. Well, since that time, there's a new product on the market, the permeable concrete. I think some of you are familiar with that from when we did a variation for Byright Company up in the industrial park. They ended up -- they had a lot coverage issue because they wanted to put an addition on their building. They ended up installing some permeable concrete on their site last year. We've been up there and inspected that, talked to the owners. They're very happy with it. It's performed really nicely. In fact, they filled a garbage can full of water, went out, poured it on this concrete, and it just soaked right through it. It was amazing. I'm thinking that probably all of you, when you came in, saw the little demonstration that we have going out in the lobby. One of the concrete contractors was kind enough to bring that in this afternoon, just kind of show you how quickly permeable concrete will allow water to absorb through it. It's actually faster than soil. So maybe I'll let John Philander make a few comments on that.
Just as a matter of background, for some of the other communities and their lot coverage restrictions, staff and myself and John have been kind of doing our own little survey of what the other communities are allowing. Lombard, for example, 50% maximum lot coverage includes buildings and impervious surfaces. Elmhurst has unrestricted coverage in the rear yard, but it must comply with the applicable setbacks, and they have a 30% for buildings. Villa Park is a 50% maximum lot coverage for impervious surfaces. Itasca, 50% impervious surface coverage. Displanes has a 30% for buildings, and they are working on a new UDO that will allow 50% for impervious surfaces and then additional 10% for pervious. The Village of Skokie has a maximum land coverage of 40% for buildings, and across all residential zoning districts, 50% maximum lot coverage for impervious surfaces. They will go over 50% on a case-by-case basis. The City of Wheaton has 33% for coverage in the front yard, a third for buildings, and an unrestricted rear yard as long as setbacks are observed. So, you know, you can see where Wooddale fits in. Wooddale is quite restrictive, and I really have, in talking to many contractors over the years, I really don't see many communities with our percentage lot coverage restriction out there. I have a couple of videos that show the -- both the pervious, concrete and pervious pavers. If they can cue the Shoreview video. This is in Shoreview, Minnesota. And then I have a paver video as well.
John, that second video is terrible.
Thank you. Well, I don't have stock in permeable pavers, and I don't have stock in permeable concrete. And there are negatives to both. I'd just like to go over a few points, and then we can take your questions. You really can't look at it as lot coverage. It's more of a built-in stormwater management system. It reduces stormwater flow and pollutant loads. Pervious surfaces have the same water management characteristics as grass and other ground cover. Pervious surfaces allow the rain to flow directly into the subbase and ground, naturally filtering out pollutants while replenishing the water table and watering surrounding trees and vegetation. Pervious concrete allows the passage of three to five gallons of water per square foot per minute. And four inches of pavement on a six-inch subbase can store a three-inch rain. So this rain event that we just had, or what we used to call rainstorms in the old days, could have easily been handled by six inches of base with a four-inch surface. The use of pervious concrete is among the best management practices recommended by the EPA and by other agencies and geotechnical engineers across the country for the management of stormwater runoff on a regional and local basis. Pervious surfaces virtually eliminate runoff. Pervious concrete is durable, sustainable, meeting both green building and water management objectives. Pervious concrete is currently being used in the City of Chicago's Green Alley program and has been used in freeze-thaw climates for 15 years. It is not as strong as regular concrete. They're -- it's not suitable for heavy truck traffic. The core samples from Chicago's Green Alley program have a developed compressive strength of 2,900 PSI, and their flexural strength is somewhere between 200 and 300 PSI. Pervious concrete is maintained by sweeping, blowing, pressure washing, and vacuuming. Studies show no significant clogging after a 12-year period that would adversely affect the performance of the material. Pervious surfaces should not be used where the surface is exposed to flooding conditions during winter. So if you get standing water on your patio now and you want to put a pervious surface in there, and it floods and it freezes, it's not gonna hold up well. Pervious pavers would probably hold up better to a freeze-thaw condition than pervious concrete when it's underwater and then a hard freeze during the winter. Pervious surfaces can cost 20 to 35% more than traditional impervious surfaces, and they should be installed by trained and experienced contractors. But all in all, what pervious surfaces do is effectively replicate an undeveloped condition. Now, you know, I was explaining this to, you know, a friend of mine, and I said, "It's a very green product. This is very -- this is very green." And he says, "Well, is it -- how green is it? Is it better than doing nothing?" And I said, "Well, it almost is better than doing nothing because it's storing water." So it's quite a -- it's quite a product when -- a material when installed properly and when it has a good base. It's not good for every situation, but you're gonna see more and more of this across the country as people are more concerned with flooding issues and stormwater runoff. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, John. I hope you don't think we've kind of taken the long way around to get to where we're going, but we wanted to show you these permeable products because the lot coverage is defined in the zoning ordinance as that part of percentage of any lot occupied by buildings or structures, concrete or paved walkways and/or driveways, and/or other concrete, impermeable or paved So we've, you know, again, we spoke about this several years ago. Some of the concerns that some of the aldermen have expressed over the years is, could people use these products and install them in their front yard to increase off-street front yard parking, which is prohibited and discouraged in the zoning ordinance? Excuse me. Another question would be, how could we monitor this property so that if we allow somebody to put in some additional lot coverage using a permeable product... to put in some additional lot coverage using a permeable product, and in five years they sell the house, and two years after that, that person decides he wants to replace that patio, he pulls out the permeable concrete patio and puts in a regular concrete patio and would make the situation worse? Well, you know, some of the suggestions that I made in the memo is we could put a restriction. Again, we're dealing with properties right now that are at their maximum lot coverage. Residents are coming to us and saying, "You know, I really want to put a patio in. I don't want a deck. I get slivers, wasps make their nests in it for whatever reason." We're denying them, putting them in a position to have to come to the zoning board and pay $560 and go through the entire process. What we could do is put some restrictions on the use of these permeable products, not allow them between the front of the principal structure and the front property line. Now, the way, the reason we would do that, as opposed to just saying they could not be in the front yard, is when we talk about yards in the zoning ordinance, when we talk about a front yard in the zoning ordinance, we're talking about their required front yard, which may only be 25 feet in from the property line. Well, if you have a house that's located 50 feet in from the front property line, that means that second 25 feet is not their required front yard. Theoretically, they could pave it and park vehicles there. So one thought would be to have this restriction be that from the front of the principal structure to the front property line, you could not increase your lot coverage, restrict it to a side yard, maybe a rear yard, perhaps put a restriction on it that it could only be for sidewalks or patios, or if you had a vehicle that complied to the commercial and RV vehicle code, and you were allowed to have it on your property, but you couldn't park it in your driveway, then somebody could make a parking area next to their garage using this permeable product if they were at their maximum lot coverage. As far as the question of what would we do if somebody removed that and put in an impermeable concrete product, all of our permits are computerized. Now, they're all listed and detailed on the computer. We could flag the installation of a permeable product on the permit, and at some point in the future, if somebody came in to request a permit to replace a patio or replace something, we could actually go back, check that address, and see if the permit that was issued previously for that patio specified that it had to be a pervious product. And we could try, we would be able to keep track of it that way. So it's, you know, again, this is something that we're asked pretty frequently by residents if, you know, they can do some installations on their property. We keep turning them down, and they keep asking us to come to the council and discuss these pervious products, so here we are.
Okay. Alderman Coles and then Alderman Eugene Wesley.
You used that at that, at that warehouse.
Correct.
We tried that. That was an experiment. It worked fine, so I don't see why we can't do it in the backyards of people's houses. I am strictly, I hate to see cement poured in back after a house is built. All of a sudden, you see a truck come up and they pour cement in the back, and I sort of get a little bit in trouble once in a while. And I see that happening in areas, and I think if you, this would be, solved the problem. Let's, let's put it in our ordinance, and let's enforce it that way. My opinion.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
John, I have a couple of questions. The factory that used it, that's been in for how long now?
They put that in about a year ago, I believe.
And how was, how was it with the salt?
I don't really know how much they salted it. I know when they had it plowed this past winter, the only precaution they had to take was to put a plastic guard on the bottom of the metal snowplow, which was just a matter of the owner telling his contractor, "You know, I have this permeable product. You've got to protect the bottom of the blade." The guy did it without really any issue, and they're very happy with it.
Okay. The other question is, how are we going to know that they installed this the correct way? Is our people trained to inspect this, that they are installed the right way? Because, you know, mom and pop could go out and buy it, I don't know if this is available at Home Depot or whatever it is, and install it this weekend, and we don't have a say-so in the matter, and they could get away with it. I mean, without us knowing about it. Because more and more people, I'll tell you the honest, God, truth, a lot more people are doing stuff without permits in this town on weekends, and we aren't catching them.
Well, the plan review process, they'll have to submit a cross-section of detail of exactly what they're doing. It's going to be highly recommended that they get a cert, there's a certification program for contractors that install this material. It is a little bit tricky on, as far as the concrete goes. It has to be placed within one hour of the mix. There's a very intricate curing process where you have to cover it with plastic. It's not something where somebody can buy this material from Home Depot, or they can call up the ready-mix company and say, "Give me six yards of pervious concrete. I'm pouring a patio." The ready-mix company will really pick them apart and say, "Well, what, what's the situation?" It's somewhat, it's somewhat site-specific. They're going to want to know, you know, how much base, you know, what the weather is that day, and they're going to ask them technical questions that if they're not qualified, they will not be able to answer. We will inspect the base, and we will inspect the finished product. That's, that would be our normal inspection for concrete. And in this case, you know, we could require that they show some kind of a certification training for, at least for concrete. The pavers are not that intricate, but the pervious concrete is quite a, quite a detailed and intricate procedure.
I'm in favor of doing it, but the only drawback I still have is, is I think it should put in there that it's got to be installed by a professional that has a license to install it. Okay? Is there a way we could put that in the ordinance? I mean, if we go ahead and pass it?
I don't see any reason why we couldn't. I mean, if somebody wanted to install the pervious concrete.
Or certification that they have to do it?
That's one of the requirements, is that they would have to use a certified contractor. You made a good point earlier about people sneaking projects in on the weekend. I was thinking about that this afternoon, and I think there are probably several people who may have come to us to install patios or something, were turned down because they exceed their lot coverage.
And they snuck them in.
And typically, those are a lot of the ones that get snuck in on the Saturdays and Sundays. I mean, we're, personally, I think, big picture, stormwater management-wise, at another time, we should maybe have some serious conversations about a wider spread use of this permeable concrete. But at this point, I wanted to bring this to you just to try and address some specific small-picture issues that come up pretty regularly.
I know, I've got at least three other aldermen up here that want to speak. I have three things I want to run by you first, John. If I'm reading your recommendation correctly, are you suggesting that when you say, when you're asking council to authorize staff the ability to administratively allow an additional 5%, that you're not looking for an ordinance or an ordinance amendment, that we just give you the, you know, the, our blessing to, to allow this to happen, to mandate this and manage it? And I have no problem with that, but I'd much rather take the pressure off you and put anything that we talk about into an ordinance. This way, there's no, you know, a future council 10 years from now doesn't wonder where this came from.
Sure. You know, initially, I was coming to you just to have you authorize staff to be able to do this over the counter. I think we're in a good position right now because we are reviewing the UDO, and I think we could include this additional lot coverage figure in the UDO, incorporate it in there, then it would be in writing, it would take some of the burden off of staff. Personally, I was going to put 10% in there for the figure, but I know how sensitive everybody is in the area with the flooding issues that we have, so I figured I would knock it down to 5%. I think an additional 5%, again, you know, specifically focusing on some of the issues that residents have coming to us when they're at their maximum lot, the 5% would allow them to put the patio in or the extra sidewalk. I think, again, sometime we should revisit this big picture and see, you know, what we might want to do citywide.
Sure. Another one of my concerns was mandating contractor certification. We've already discussed that. I think that's important. It should be in there. And then I just briefly want to, I want to make a comment on John Philander's comment. I'm going to get you, John. Your friend asked you.